Test of the City of Palaca audio system.
We're a little bit after four o'clock, starting the Planning Board, City of Palaca, I'm gonna call it to order. Pastor Mulberry, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, if everybody would stand, and we're gonna have the invocation, and George, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pastor Mulberry?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you once again for how you blessed us to come to the new year. Pray that your wisdom, God, would be upon our heads and our hearts. That you would lead and guide us throughout this year and throughout these Planning Board sessions. We ask for your divine presence to be with your people, to breathe on us again the breath of your wind and spirit. God, we thank you now for every person on the board, every person representing the city decision makers. We ask for your presence to be with them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grants, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Kaitlyn Owens, George Deloach, Ed Killibrue,
Here.
Don Ross,
Here.
Chase Barnes,
Here.
Edie Wilson,
Here.
And we have an excused absence, Viral Wallace.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess we move into the swearing in now. Where you wanna stand?
You can, being there's multiple board members, Mr. Chair, would it be okay if those board members being sworn in just stand in their places?
Sure, that'll work, thank you. Ms. Ross?
Thank you.
I'm impressed, first time I ever got anything like that.
You want us to sign this?
I realize that, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, please, if you would sign the yours of office and return one back to me when we're done, or after the meeting. And if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I,
Aye.
A Planning Board appointee,
A Planning Board appointee.
Of the Palaca City Commission,
Of the Palaca City Commission.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
By, by, solemnly swear and confirm.
I will faithfully perform the duties,
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of my appointed office,
Of my appointed office.
And will support,
And will support.
And honor,
And honor.
To the best of my ability,
To the best of my ability.
All applicable laws,
All what? All applicable laws.
You can read it off the page now.
Oh, uh.
Of the state of Florida,
Of the state of Florida.
Putnam County,
Putnam County.
The City of Palaca,
The City of Palaca.
As well as the beliefs,
As well as the beliefs.
Vision,
Vision.
Mission,
Mission.
Policies,
Policies.
Procedures,
Procedures.
Code of ethics,
Code of ethics.
And code of conduct,
Code of con, and code of conduct.
Of the City of Palaca Planning Board.
Of the City of Palaca Planning Board.
I hereby through this oath,
I hereby through this oath,
Affirm,
Affirm.
That I will perform the duties,
That I will perform the duties.
Of this public trust,
Of this public trust.
In a fair,
In a fair.
Equitable,
Equitable.
An ethical manner,
An ethical manner.
Befitting the dignity,
Befitting the dignity.
And responsibilities of the office.
And responsibilities of the office.
On behalf of the City of Palaca, I do thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Are we through? Southern accent, I didn't know we had such.
I did, I had to completely shut that off. It was a lot of playing.
Well, okay. That was my memo. Okay, we'll move forward to the appeals procedure and ex parte communication. Notice, any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the Planning Board with respect to any matter, consider that such meeting will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, far as statutes two eighty-six, one zero one zero five. Okay, the next thing we need to move to is the selection of the chair for two thousand twenty-two. Can I hear any? Okay.
Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second, a denomination in a second, is there any other nominations? You're the one that did this to me last year, so just making sure, okay, no further nominations, or, so I'll close the nominations. I guess I need to ask for a vote for that, all those in favor? All those opposed? So be it, I'm chairman of two thousand twenty-two. Selection of a vice chairman for two thousand and twenty-two, I will open that for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. George Deloach.
There's nomination in a second, any further nominations? Nominations are closed, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Mr. Deloach is our vice chairman for the two thousand twenty-two session. Approval of minutes from December the seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear approval of minutes? There's a second, of, of motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Minutes passed. Okay, at this point, we'll open, we'll open up to public comments, speakers are limited three minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on anything that the planning boards? Seeing none, I close that. Okay. Actually, there's, what's the other public comments on here for Ms. Grants? Okay. We'll step into our regular public business. Ms. Walsh, would you wanna take it away, please?
Mr. Chair, if I may be allowed, on the agenda, we've skipped ex parte communications.
No. Um, I read it.
I, I didn't hear you call for any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, okay. With this coming forward, do we have any ex parte communications, is anybody?
Yes, I need to.
Recuse yourself, okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Grants, I forgot all about that. Yes, ma'am, I believe so. Can you speak into your microphone a little bit more, Ms. Walsh? No, is it on? There you go. Wow, you are turned on now.
Yes, ma'am, how's that?
Still ringing, wow, we're all ringing now.
Yeah. This is a request for a tree removal permit to allow the removal of one southern live oak porcupus virginiana tree with a diameter at breast height of at least thirty-six inches. Or greater. Thank you, Senator. Public notice has been given per our code and statutes. The property is located at sixty-eight oh five and sixty-eight thirteen St. John's Avenue. It currently has a land use designation of residential high density in a zoning category of PUD slash R three. The applicant has submitted site construction plans that include a tree survey. There is one, as I mentioned earlier, one southern live oak tree outside the bona fide agricultural area that was, I delineated on the tree survey. It has a diameter greater than thirty-six inches at breast height. Per section ninety-four dash two ninety-four C three, such a tree removal application is required to be presented to the Planning Board for its consideration. Sunny, do you have a copy of the staff report that you can show the map? Thank you, ma'am. So here you can see the property outlined in red. The oak tree in question is at the lower right, basically at the lower right corner of that red rectangle. The property is approximately eighteen and a half acres in size, part of which includes an area of planted pines, and per the code, trees within the area of a bona fide agricultural use are exempt from replacement tree calculations. So they were not included in the tree survey, inches preserved versus inches that needed to be mitigated for. Again, there's only one tree that has to be considered, and it's in the lower right area of the rectangle. Section ninety-four dash two ninety-four C four of the code lists criteria to be considered by the Planning Board for an approval, conditional approval or denial decision on a tree removal permit. Those items are addressed in your staff report. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can briefly go over them.
If you would, please.
The first criteria is the extent to which tree removal decreases aesthetic and environmental quality, land values, and physical benefits to human beings. Southern live oak trees may be called super trees due to their superior ability to sequester carbon, stabilize soils, and provide flood remediation and heat reduction, according to an article in Science Daily. The south, additionally, the South Florida Plant Guide by Francis Poots of the University of Florida states that a single live oak tree can add thirty thousand dollars to the monetary value of a property. Additionally, the trees are wind resistant, which may help damage, prevent damage from a wind event. Item B, the necessity to remove trees through which pose a safety hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic or threaten to cause disruption to public services. That doesn't apply here because there's currently no improvements in place on the property. C, the necessity to remove trees which pose a safety hazard to buildings or other trees, same reason this one is not applicable. D, the necessity to remove diseased trees or trees weakened by age, weather, storm, fire, or acts of God, or which are likely to cause injury or damage to people, buildings, or other improvements on a lot or parcel of land. The tree has not been evaluated for its health by a certified arborist, but it is not currently likely to cause injury or damage to people, buildings, or other improvements as the current use is agricultural. Item E, the extent to which tree removal is likely to result in damage to the property of other owners, public or private, including damage to lakes, ponds, streams, or rivers through runoff or erosion. Subject property doesn't have a significant slope, but it will be graded to drain to a central stormwater pond near the middle of the property. In general, the removal of trees exacerbates runoff, destabilizing soils and impacting soil or water quality. New trees may be planted, but they must grow to the size of the current trees to match the existing mitigation of runoff. The current configuration of the proposed buildings places the tree in question in close proximity to a proposed paved area sidewalk and building. Item F, the proposed landscaping, including plans whereby the applicant has planted or will plant perennial vegetative cover to replace those trees which are proposed to be cleared. The applicant is calculating replacement tree inches for all non-exempt trees to be removed for live oak trees greater than thirty-six inches DBH. The ordinance requires a two-thirds replacement ratio of inches removed. As the DBH of the subject tree is fifty inches, the replacement value would be thirty-three inches. The topography in item G is the topography of the land and the effect of tree removal on erosion, soil retention, and the diversion of or increased flow of surface water. Some of the effect of the tree removal on erosion, soil retention, and the diversion or increased flow will be mitigated by the replanting of trees, site grading, and for stormwater drainage and the planting of grasses and shrubs. So we know that while the trees may be removed, there will be impervious and pervious surfaces put back. Item H, construction of proposed improvements to allow access around the proposed structure or construction equipment, access to the building site for construction equipment or essential grade changes. Portions of the site are proposed to have open space, but most of it will be built upon with structures and roadways. Given that most existing trees will be removed, there should be sufficient access for construction equipment. Item I, this is a pretty long list, I know. The land use and natural vegetative ground coverage of the surrounding properties. Table one in the report lists the surrounding land uses with zoning. The residential uses to the east have a typical suburban vegetative cover consisting of lawn grasses and trees. The property to the west is currently in silvicultural use, while property to the south is vacant and listed as an agricultural use. And to the north, the uses listed are industrial and commercial. Item J, the extent of any damage or hardship to the applicant resulting from a denial of the requested permit. If denied, the applicant may have to redesign the layout of structures on the property to accommodate the tree location and its root system. Item K, the species and size of the tree proposed for removal. The southern live oak tree in question has a diameter of fifty inches and is located toward the rear of the property, as we mentioned earlier. That concludes the list of criteria. Staff has recommended that the board has three decisions, options, decision options. You can choose to deny the application to remove the tree, and that would be based on basic, on various criteria, which is listed on the red motion card that you have in front of you. You can choose A, J, or K as one or all of the options if you were to choose denial. The second option would be to approve the removal of the live oak tree. Or to, the third one would be to approve the removal with a condition or conditions, as you choose. Staff has recommended as a possible approval condition to increase the live oak's replacement tree caliber to three inches because of the amount of mature canopy being removed for section ninety-four to ninety-four six. Staff will stand for questions.
Any questions to Ms. Walsh?
Yes, the proposed condition to increase the replacement tree caliber to three inches, can you elaborate on that a little more?
The replacement requirement is one and a half inches DBH for any replacement tree in particular. Like if it was just one replacement tree, it would be one and a half inches minimum in diameter. So in our code, in section two ninety, ninety-four dash two ninety-four six, So in our code in section two ninety, ninety-four dash two ninety-four six, it allows for a doubling of that DBH requirement. So the minimum DBH would be three inches instead of inch and a half for a particular tree. Replacement tree.
I don't quite follow.
You don't quite follow? Okay.
All right, so in his particular instance, we're removing a fifty-inch tree. He'd be required to, to put a hundred and fifty inches back?
No, sir.
Okay, good. That's what I'm not understanding.
Thirty-three inches back.
Fair enough.
Okay, so that thirty-three inches can be made up of theoretically, one thirty-inch, thirty-three-inch tree, which is not going to happen, two sixteen and a half inch diameter trees, or, or on down the line. So you could have several smaller diameter trees or several, or a few larger, or a combination of both. You could, but the minimum would, the minimum diameter of any replacement tree would be one and a half inches. Instead, and, and in this case, it would be double that or three inches. Okay, does that make sense?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Don't say that. It takes a while to get your mind wrapped around some of this stuff.
Yes, Ms.
I have a question, and it might not be directed directly to you, but why wasn't, why didn't they consider that tree when they were actually doing their, I'm not sure if the right word is going to be site plan?
Survey.
Survey.
Tree survey.
When they were doing that, why didn't they go ahead and take it in consideration since it is a fairly massive tree? And such an important tree. Can we, that's hindsight. I mean, that tree was there. And why wasn't it considered when they were doing that survey to plan around?
Question for the applicant.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to Mr. Jones in just a minute.
Okay.
Whenever you get through with what you're doing.
All right.
Do we have, on the overlay of, of the proposed construction, do we know exactly where the tree is in that image?
Yes.
I see that, but that doesn't help me. Scroll up to the top. Where are we at? Where's the tree in that image?
Go back up, Sunny.
I'm bringing it down.
Right here.
So right in the, yeah, okay. So there's no working around it. Fair enough.
Any further questions to Ms. Walsh? Saying then, thank you, Ms. Walsh. Is there anybody representing the? Come on, Mr. Jones. Give your name and address, please, for record.
Run Jones, two eighty-three East End Road, San Mateo, Florida, representing the applicant. I'll respond to your question first. The.
That would be Ms. Wilson for the record.
The, as you can see, the project's pretty densely developed. And there's a certain pattern you have to have in order to keep the, to maintain the highest density you can get. And this happens that where the tree is located would interfere with four buildings and parking that accesses eight buildings potentially. So there's not a good way to work around it in that location. It's a great tree. We, we went out on site, looked at it. It's a nice tree, I wish we could keep it. But it does not work with the site plan that is designed with architecturally designed plan to be aesthetically pleasing layout. And the pond is centrally located.
Is that the pond?
The pond, yes, ma'am. You see in the, in the center there, that's, that's just the back half of the property in the picture. So there really isn't a good way to preserve it and maintain the project as designed. If we could keep it, we'd love to.
Density is more important than the value of the tree, basically.
Yes, ma'am, to the developers.
Bottom line's dollars.
Yes.
I'm trying to be Earl.
You know, the mitigation that's required replaces the tree, and over time, those other trees will grow and be large trees in, in the long term. And it's replaced with, if we, if you go with the three inches, it would be replaced with eleven additional oak trees on site that are in addition to what would be required for other tree mitigation on site.
So they would be a southern live oak.
Yes, ma'am. That will be probably the most predominant tree replaced on site, even though most of the trees were mitigating for probably pine.
Mr. Jones, would you have any objections to us raising the caliber to three inches versus one and a half?
What I would, what I would, if I could ask you to do something, it would be to require us to replace that tree with three-inch trees. I've talked about that with the developer. And we feel that's a very reasonable request from the city to make. I would request that you not make it a requirement for all the tree mitigation on site. The fifty-inch tree is the, really the only one we're subject to dealing with in this meeting. And while the city staff can still, in our approval of the project, require us to replace trees for the rest of the canopy in larger caliber. It's not something your board has to require us to do. So we'd perfectly happy to replace that tree with three-inch caliber trees.
Mr. Jones, the way I understand this, and I went out on, I went out, if you see tire tracks out there, I went all through them Palmetto's tape just with my truck looking and everything like that. My understanding is that you're, that y'all are going to take all the trees down out there?
No, there's, we're going to preserve all the ones that we can that fit in with the site plan. If you look, there's an open space. I think it's where the trees are highlighted in that area there. Those are going to be kept. There are some along the east property line that are on the property, but within a drainage easement. Some of those may have to come out when that easement is improved. That's a county easement. We're not using it. There are some trees in there that may have to come out. It may turn out that the developer actually does that cleaning of that ditch for the county in return for some considerations by the county. But all efforts will be made to save any trees within that area that we can, because they create a buffer between us and neighboring properties and just make the site more attractive. I mean, we're, we're, we're incentivized to protect all the trees we can. Just the ones that are in, that we can't develop around are going to have to come out.
Now, the ones, the ones along the, the right away that you're talking about are, those, those are mostly pines, are they not?
I think those are mostly pines. There's probably some oak trees in that stretch too, but I don't know specifically exactly what every tree is out there.
Okay.
I did go through the tree survey today and calculated an average tree size for the property. It's eleven point six inches. So you've got a handful of trees out there that are larger, you know, the fifty-inch oak, some sixteen, eighteen, twenty-four-inch pines. It kind of swayed that average up, but a lot of the trees in there that are being cleared are, are six, four, six, eight-inch pines.
Okay.
The predominant tree on the side is pine.
So when you go in and you, and you clear everything out, like you're talking about doing, predominantly clearing it out and running it towards the pond, what is going to keep the ground from around it to running down into your pond?
Everything's going to be grassed and stabilized. All the drainage on the site is conveyed to the pond through pipes from inlets in the parking lots, everything on the, the, the building sites, the roofs, the yards around the buildings, all drain to the parking lots and then through pipes to the pond. So all that's going to be stabilized and grassed as soon as the final grading has been achieved. So there won't be any disturbed ground left for any long periods of time. There'll be silt fence and things like that placed around the perimeter to keep it from leaving the site.
Ms. Thomas, are you there?
Yes, I am.
I've got a question for you in reference to when we approved their PUD a while back. Is there, can I refer back to that, or can I not?
Is it?
There's not, no, there's got nothing to do with the trees.
Well, the matter before the board at this time is the tree application.
I understand. I just want to go back to a point that we were told one thing and another thing's happening.
Okay, you can bring it up. I mean, if it has something to do with the trees and it's a matter that's before the board.
Okay, well, that's what, like I said, it doesn't have anything to do with the trees. Something we were told, so if you're, if you're telling me I can't, that's fine.
That's fine. Well, you can bring it up, but as far as the consideration of it with this matter, you know, the board that, what's before them is the, the matter.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm not trying to, I mean, I'm not trying to change anything. I just want to put this out there. Well, I guess I am trying to change something. I don't know. Anyhow, when we were, and this has nothing to do with you, Mr. Jones, because you weren't part of it at that time, I don't think. But if y'all, if the board will remember when that came before us before, I'm just, I'm just saying this as a, as a, you know, okay, we're going to have these trees, and we're not going to have these trees. And you're, you're, you're in representation of the developer now, but you really don't have final say. And I know that the city code enforcement will have to come back, and if Earl was here, he'd be all over this, Mr. Wallace. But the, what I'm speaking of is back then, when they got their PUD, okay, okay, we were told that these units were going to be sold. And now my understanding through the grapevine is that they're going to be rented. So what keeps things from, other than code enforcement, you know, what keeps things from going to it's better to ask forgiveness than it is permission, Mr. Jones?
I'm not, I didn't know there was a representation that the units would absolutely be sold. We were operating with the design of this project all throughout the process that it was, it was an optional sale or rental situation.
Okay.
So I'm unaware that there was anything in the PUD that required the lots to be done for sale.
Okay, well, that's what I'm just saying, what, I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat. I'm just asking a question. What keeps, what, again, back to it's better to ask for forgiveness than it is permission?
If, if that's a condition of the PUD, I would think it would create a problem.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about from this point forward, what I'm talking about.
We're, we're, we're limited to doing the things that were approved by the city force to do, is all I can say.
Okay. Ms. Moore, I'm sorry.
Mr. Jones, the replacement trees, are they going to be on site?
Yes, all the trees will be on site.
Have you proposed where yet, or just still in the works?
There's a landscape plan that's, that's a little bit fluid at this point in time, because we're still working with staff on reviewing and approving the final plan. But all the trees will be located on site.
Okay, I don't understand that.
Hang on, oh, okay, go ahead. You had a question to him?
Okay, on site. But what about taking that one tree and you're removing it? Aren't some of those smaller trees going to go back there? I don't understand what you're, are they just have to be somewhere?
Somewhere on the site, and they'll be placed in a manner that is deemed to be appealing to the community by the landscape architect. And in a position where they can grow in a healthy fashion. We're responsible for keeping them, keeping them growing.
Mr. Deloitte?
I have a question. Several years ago, when I was president of the Downtown Merchants Association, part of Michigan Tree City, and the certified tree city, is Polackus still a certified tree city? Is that correct? So.
That question directed, Ms. Walsh?
Yes, sir. It is still a tree city.
Excuse me, this is Valeria Thomas. I can't hear you.
Turn your microphone on, Mr. Deloitte. There you go.
Okay. Anyhow, there were certain limitations to what trees could be taken down and could not be and so forth as a tree city. Has that been looked at by the city?
This is Lisa Walsh. Yes, it has, sir, and it's been codified into our municipal code. And that's what we're going by with these recommendations and rules that we've been looking at for this application.
Mr. Jones, is that, the majority of the property look like this? Is it that clear? Or is there density when it comes to?
Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson. Stayed into your microphone. What you referencing?
I'm just referencing the big picture of the tree, the single tree. I was just asking if that is what the majority of the property looked like? Or is there density where the pines are that's just not in this pick?
I would say that that's, that's one of the more open areas of the site. If you look at it, I had, the site has a bunch of small trees. There's seven hundred and twenty-five trees on the site. Most of them are fairly, fairly small.
Pine farm trees, most of them.
Okay.
Where the area where that oak tree is, is a pretty wide open area. Whether that's because the tree is there or whether it was, it was just stayed away from and planting pines in the past, I don't know. I don't know the history of that. But I had trouble finding it on the map. And when I pulled it up on Google Earth, I found a big tree in the middle of a wide open area, and that was it. So that's how I was able to find it. It's kind of an open area by itself.
Any further questions of Mr. Jones? Yes, Mrs. Owens? Come on, spit it out. Okay, uh, okay. Any further questions? And thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, sir. Okay, I'm closing the public code. Well, actually, I guess I need to open, ma'am, are you here? Did you want to speak one? Okay. I'm closing the public comment side of this and opening up the board comments. Anybody have any comments? Anything you want to say to each other?
I just hate that Mr. Wallace wasn't here because he's the one that's totally up on all of the.
Mrs. Krantz, don't you have a letter from Mr. Wallace? No, you do not. Okay, sorry.
I just, I did receive an email just for complete openness. I did receive an email from Mr. Wallace that said that he regretted that he wasn't able to attend.
Okay, then. I will hear a motion. Oh, okay.
Staff's proposed conditions to improve the tree caliber to three. Is that just in reference to this one tree? Or would that make it to where it was applicable to every tree on the site?
At this time, it's just for the one tree.
Thank you.
Look at the yellow.
So they would, Ms. Walsh, they would have to come back, well, I guess not, just a, just a bigger tree or whatever they call that sized tree. That's what they would have to come back to cut down? There's, there's a certain size, what do they call it? Yes, but there's, yes, but there's a certain sized tree that's. Oh, what do they call it, Mr. Deloitte? It's a, Mr. Wallace was having a fit about it when they did the Dollar General store. American tree or American something.
I can't remember.
Heritage tree. Or do any of them relate to any of that?
No.
Okay. All right, so would they have to come back for the other three trees that are on the property?
No.
No, okay. That answer your question, Ms. Moore?
I had, I had a question.
Wasn't that your question?
Did I say someone? Okay, so essentially with this condition, we're basically doubling it, because normally it would be one and a half inches, and we're saying that it would have to be three instead?
Correct.
Okay.
The replacement tree would have, the total, the total required to be replaced would still be thirty-three inches. But the minimum of the size of those replacement trees would be three inches instead of one and a half.
Okay, I'm following. Okay.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the removal of the fifty-inch live oak tree with the condition that we increase the live oak replacement tree caliber to three inches.
Motion is your second?
I second.
There's a motion in the second that we approve with the condition of a three-inch caliber tree being replaced by it? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're two to two. I guess I'll be the tiebreaker, and I'll say aye to the next side of it. So that, where do we go with that, Ms. Thomas? Ms. Thomas?
Did you?
I need.
Yeah, you're. Okay, that was my question. You're an, a name, Mr. Keller Brew?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the motion failed.
Right, okay. But I'm just saying, we got to have some kind of, I guess we just said they have to come back, okay? I'm just kind of a little confused by this, but that's fine.
We should move it from here to the city council.
That's right, okay. Yeah. It'll move from, ours is just a recommendation. The city council had the other say on that. No? Doesn't it go to the city council after us? Ms. Thomas?
I don't think so. Okay, Ms. Thomas.
If he appeals.
Okay, uh.
If we go to the city commission.
Okay, uh, well then, motion fails and thank you for your time, Ms. Jones.
So, I mean, just so we can have some clarification, the motion that, that there would be removal with conditions, that motion failed.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
So that, that, that was the motion, right, Ms. Krantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yes, Ms., Ms., Ms. Thomas. I'm, I'm pending any other motions by the board.
Okay. So at this point, we have no decision on the tree whether, um.
That's what I was trying to say, Ms. Thomas.
Okay.
I'm just not as eloquent as a lawyer is.
Thank you, Mrs. Keller Brew.
Yes, ma'am.
So it, it, but what, does the board want to discuss it further and come up with another motion or is everybody comfortable with that? And then we'll move to the next case?
Yes, ma'am. Mr., Mr. Barnes has asked to be heard.
Uh, between the board, are there any conditions that could be placed that would make this? Okay. In your mind.
I was actually curious too, as to like, I, I mean, could we, could we make it more? Like, would that work out? Or could we make them plant more trees? Like, could we put any kind of a, a thing there on it or like, or like increase it even from not being three inches to something else? I didn't know. You know, I guess what we could do in terms of, I guess I'm, I guess I'm asking the same thing he is.
Ms. Walsh, do you have any input on that?
I'm working on it, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, as I stated, they would still only be required to replace thirty-three inches. And those thirty-three inches could be made up of a variety of sizes of trees. For example, I don't know the exact numbers. I'm not really good at doing math on my feet like this, especially without coffee late in the afternoon. Um,
but essentially we couldn't make them do more than thirty-three inches. That would be like the, the, like, we couldn't make them, okay.
That's just for that one tree. There's going to be a whole lot of trees planted.
Right.
Board, we're entertaining another motion. Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Well, now, my question, you know, looking at this red paper that's got if, say, if I made, made a motion to deny to begin with, um, somewhere we had to have fallen within here, I kind of know where I fell. Um.
That's just a recommendation.
Right.
You can make the motion to deny and, and based upon whatever your heart is content on. But are there any? Back to my question, which hadn't been answered, are, are there any conditions that could be placed that would make this an approvable project? Because right now my understanding is they're going to have to redesign the entire layout of this development site. Um, or cut out a huge chunk of it. And that's being in the real estate market, I understand the need for housing in Putnam County. Um, so I, I would like to discuss with the board if there are any conditions that could be placed to, to make this appeasing for everyone salvage the project. If not, then there's not. I mean, but based upon what your specific objections were, is there anything you can think to remedy it?
To me, I think the biggest issue, right, is that we can't ask them to do more than the thirty-three inches of, of that tree that's already, you know, that would be coming down. And it is a really, really beautiful tree. The developers, to some extent, have already thought about the process of whether or not we did not approve this. So what would, what would the layout look like then? Like, how would it be differently? What is, how much is this tree impacting what they would want to do?
It's, it's reducing the number of, of units.
That they can have, essentially.
I, I would think that's.
It would require reducing the number of units. It would require rearranging the units in a fashion that is not as, uh, good of a community design. There is an open space elsewhere on the property that doesn't have big trees in it, but it is a more centrally located place. It would be of better use to all the residents than one stuck off its side. Um, there are means by which the tree could potentially be saved, but they are not they will not continue to allow the tree to, I don't believe, to live in the same, uh, it won't be as healthy as it has been. It would be, be something that would constrain the roots of the tree so it doesn't push up sidewalk, push up pavement. And in such a constrained condition, that tree could become more of a hazard for overturning in a hurricane or something like that and causing damage to one of the buildings that was there. So that, that's something that's done, but it is not what we wanted to do.
Why wasn't it, I mean, why they knew the property? So why wasn't it considered in worked around knowing what the value of a southern live oak has to the area, whatever? So why wasn't it considered?
Because we were, I, we came up with a plan that would mitigate for the loss of the trees in accordance to what the city's code requirements are.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, come before your board and ask us, ask for the, uh, approval to remove that, that one tree that requires your board's approval. That's, that's one way of, of addressing it and dealing with it. And that's the way that we chose to do it. If we could pick it up and move it, we'd love to.
Yes, ma'am. I see a question.
No, I mean, I know, I mean, no, I, you know, just try to hash it out. Um, but, but I don't know how to hash it out at this moment.
That, that one tree will be replaced by eight or ten different trees.
I understand that. And that, that's not it on my part, my part. More is just the species, the size of the tree. That, that's where I fall. And I'm a southern gal, I just think, I mean, that, that, that is what, that's where my heart, my head says. It's the species and size of the tree proposed for minimum.
Yeah, I mean, even with the ones that you're going to replace, the numbers you're going to replace, you're still replacing with a three inch tree.
I get it.
I mean, um.
Would you consider tabling this until next month or till the next meeting? So I can try to come up with something that might be more appealing.
What's the pleasure, the board?
I agree.
Mr.
I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this discussion until further notice.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's tabled to, to where, whenever you come back to Ms. Walsh and bring us something else, okay?
Um, Mr. Chair, is it going to be for the next meeting? Or is it going to be that, um, it'll be noticed again? Just trying to get clarification.
Be noticed again.
Okay. Because Ms. Krantz is always concerned about the cost for advertising for these meetings.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Want to pay the advertising cost?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I be, if I, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms., Ms. Valeria the Sunny, my, my impression from what the applicant requested from the tabling was that he's going to advise staff when he has a plan in mind and then staff will reassign this to a, to a board meeting in the future. So that's why I didn't believe they were looking for a time and date certain.
When, when is your next meeting?
I just wanted to make sure that we were all sure about what was. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, because the motion's passed already, we would need an amended motion, we would need an, uh, amended motion, right, Ms. Thomas?
Next month give you enough time?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'd like to amend my motion.
Hang on just a minute.
Sorry.
Ms. Thomas didn't answer. Ms. Thomas?
I guess, I heard, that's fine. Yes, he can amend his motion so that it's for time certain next meeting.
Yeah, but we haven't fully confused you, right?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay, all right. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion for this to come back before the board on the next state of communication.
Who did the second on that? Did you just, Caitlin? Do you approve of that? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All of us opposed? Motion passes. So we'll see you next month.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Um, do any board members have any other? Anything that they would like to comment on or say at this point? Yes, sir, Ms. Moore?
I'd like to congratulate the two new officers for the twenty twenty-two year, and I wish you a lot of success.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Appreciate that.
Yes, congratulations for such, uh, you know, high esteem.
Okay. Anybody else?
As long as we can keep y'all there, then that means we get to sit over here.
With that being said, I have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you.